A little past ten o'clock, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting order. This is a regular, Commissioner's Court meeting, County of Starr, Monday, December fourteenth. Mr. Richard Show is due at four. Everyone be in present. Uh, will everyone please stand to our committee?
This is the United States of America. And the Republican Party, which stands. One nation, united, and individual, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments?
Yeah.
See if you can...
Yeah, for a minute.
Is Danny Judge standing before Executive and me yet?
I see him. She. Yeah, we...
I think Executive, well, she cannot go into Executive's section.
Well, it's because he has an item on the...
Yeah, I just told her that just to be here just in case.
Oh, God.
I have her document.
It's easy to tell one. Look under that. Anyone else?
No, sir.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and go on with our regular agenda. Next item is approved of minutes. Uh, don't have any...
Motion to approve, yeah. Aye.
Move the second to approve, discussion. Alonfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, next item is claims.
Uh, good morning, Judge Commissioners. Actually, we've got the vendor list.
I'm sorry, vendor list, right.
And you should have a copy of that in front of you. We reviewed it, we recommended your proof.
Motion to back.
Second.
Move in second to pass, discussion. Alonfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, and the next thing is the claims.
Yes, sir, the claims, again, you should have a copy of the claims in front of you. We reviewed it and we recommended your proof.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
Move in second to approve, discussion. Alonfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We'll go ahead and go on to our reports, and I believe you all have copy of all of the the reports in your packet. Uh, I guess if there's any specific question, we can go ahead and recall the specific department. One thing I did notice was on the sheriff's, the jail's revenue. It's almost at three hundred thousand, I mean, that is really beautiful. Hopefully. That would be, what are we reading down?
Have you been into it already?
Yes.
Do you have a tablet?
Almost three hundred thousand. Yeah, I think on that particular one, uh, I had budgeted around two tens, I guess.
How much?
About two hundred and ten thousand per month.
For a month, a year, three hundred thousand?
Yeah.
One day? All day, about eighty thousand over?
I see.
What, through the whole year?
Again, this is one...
One on, one on. But it's gonna keep on?
Hopefully, hopefully it'll keep on. There for a while, we were, I mean, it wasn't really bad. We were making, uh, less than a hundred thousand. Uh, but that was due to COVID and all this other stuff. But, um, now, I guess the feds are sending their prisoners, and also Elano County has been sending some of theirs.
Well, you would get a second, let's see, what time, start, can I go with it today?
Can I lift you?
Yeah.
Wow. Elano County Judge?
Yeah.
Ah, does he know this is Richard Cortez?
Richard Cortez.
Yeah.
Richard Cortez.
That's Richard.
What's that, give it to me.
That's what I...
Ah, they come with it?
The tablet. The tablet.
Can I, I guess, uh, you got your report in there?
Yes, sir.
You want to just break to go over your... That summary? Yeah, that one will pretty much summarize everyone.
All right, Tom. So, this would be the summary report for the month of November twenty twenty, so it's the second year of the fiscal, uh, second month of the fiscal year. Uh, page one reflects the reconciliations. For the general fund at two million, four seventy-four, three twenty-eight, thirty-three. Road and Bridge Fund, one million, three hundred and twenty, oh thirty-eight, oh five. And Payroll Clearing Fund at four hundred and eighty-nine thousand, thirty-five dollars, ninety-eight cents. Part two reflects the expenditure report for the general fund as of November thirtieth. As a percentage of the year elapsed, which is sixteen point seventy-two percent. Uh, the general fund amount expended year-to-date is three million, two hundred and fifteen thousand, two ninety-nine. Or sixteen point eighty-three percent, just slightly above the sixteen seventy-two. And you've got a breakdown of several departments, uh, at the bottom of page one and continuing through page two. Uh, the departments exceeding the sixteen point seventy-two are involved. On page three, part three reflects the expenditure reports for the Road and Bridge Fund, again, as of November thirtieth. Uh, the fund amount expended year-to-date is eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three ninety-four. Or fourteen point fifty-six, which is below that sixteen point seventy-two. Uh, below that, you got a breakdown of the numbers for some of the departments within the Road and Bridge Consolidated Fund. The remainder of page three and continuing through page four, we have a summary of the revenue reports for the general fund and the Road and Bridge Fund. Year-to-date revenues collected are four million, eight fifty-two, seven seventy-seven. Or twenty-five point forty-one percent. And two million, eleven thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight, or thirty-two point three percent, respectively. And at page five, you've got the enterprise funds as of November thirtieth. The international bridge reflects revenues of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, four forty-six, with expenditures of six hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight seventy-nine. It is noted that out of that six twenty-five, eight seventy-nine, four hundred and sixteen thousand, six sixty-six. Uh, of those expenditures are reflective of the remaining ten months of the participation with grown-up. The thing is, we, we expensed the full amount for the year, so it's overstating those expenditures in, in the, uh... Is it colored?
Yeah.
Blank blank. If not actual expenditure yet, it's in the, uh...
Ah.
No, not projected.
Encumbered?
Encumbered, encumbered. So that, I'm sorry, encumbered, it hasn't been expended yet. So that, that four hundred and sixteen, if we take that out, uh, the result would be an excess of forty-seven thousand, two thirty-three, subsequently positive. Uh, the gas operating system reflects a hundred and forty-seven thousand, three twenty-one of revenue. With expenditures of a hundred and eleven, four forty-seven, an excess of thirty-five thousand, eight seventy-four. And finally, the solid weight transfer station reflects revenues of a hundred and fifty-one thousand, twenty-nine dollars. With expenditures of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, seventy-two dollars. A deficit of a thousand dollars, a thousand, twenty-three dollars. Uh, page six reflects a summary of the debt owed as of November thirtieth. The total current balance being one million, nine hundred and twenty-nine thousand, thirty-three dollars. Any questions on...
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, I guess, uh, the next, uh, item we have is a presentation by Dr. Mary Jane Gasa of the U.S. Census.
Senator, Dr. Mary Jane?
Good morning.
Buenos dias.
You're good.
I'm fine, how's everyone? Good?
Yes, you will.
All right, look, in the lunch, that, it's a pleasure to be here before you. And it's the day of your new update of the census, and of course, you know, David Capodanno will be presenting with me. And on behalf of every census worker that came, Iacema, Albert, Benito, Alex, we all wanted to say we... You did exceptionally well. Uh, just so you know, the last update, we were talking with a self-count, people counting themselves. You were at forty-nine percent. There will be another update coming later this month, and I know you're gonna hit that fifty percent target. And I know that because in twenty-ten, when we had no COVID, we had no hurricane, you were at forty-five. So with all these challenges that came before us, and we had to change things, you were the one county that surpassed your twenty-ten goal. So thank you very much, and you did it through your hard work. You did it because of all the leadership that you exhibited. You did it because you allowed us to work with Cynthia, who was marvelous, and we presented her a certificate as well. But then you also had several other people that contributed so much. And yes, each of you has your own frame certificate, so you can place it on the wall. But we also have certificates for all those workers that did the extra mile. But before I read those names, I know David wants to say a few words, because he worked tirelessly for here, as well as Iacema, and Benito, and Alex. He had eight partnership specialists here. And every day, they would tell me things that were going on. And Cynthia was marvelous, we would work together, and she would say, I need eight more RAs down here. And we'd get them. But it was through her work and her leadership, through you, that it made it happen. David?
Right. Right, good morning, gentlemen. Um, so, I did a lot of the grunt work here in Starr County. Um, and one of the things I learned about Starr County is the people are very genuine, very straightforward, you know, and, um... Commissioners, I went to so many of the food pantries you guys had, and we were there at four-thirty, five in the morning, getting ready. And one of the things I'd like to say is, there was no rules for COVID. There was, what we did in Starr County started getting implemented in Edwards County, Cameron County. All the other counties were saying, what's, why is Starr County jumping by five percent, four percent, when every other county was only going up by two, tip two, um, tenths of a percent? Half a percent, why is Starr County jumping up so much? And it was because you allowed some of your staff to say, hey, the census people are gonna come here, they have our permission, you know, and we did it. You guys developed plans that other counties were asking, why, why is this county that's supposed to be a hard-to-count area? You know, that the people aren't really involved, why are they growing so much? And it was because of the leadership, and you saying, you know what? Let's let them, um, do what they have to do. Because I'm not gonna lie to you, we were developing the ideas and the plans as they came. Because when the day said, when they told us as federal employees, say, you guys can go out there. You know, we were the first ones to go out there, because even then, for a month, some of our other counterparts didn't go out. All right, but Starr County is on the map, and I'll tell you one thing, we're already talking about twenty-thirty, and they wanna implement some of the stuff that you guys did, um, in other parts of the state. So just thank you, and know that a lot of the people that you had out there in the different cities, to us, they're like unsung heroes, you know? And we're making sure that every one of them gets recognized with a certificate, with a call or a visit. And just thank you all for, you know, and I'm sure we called Judge so many times about the census and, and the commissioners, you know, we were always in your offices. I'm sure your staff was talking about it, but just thank you from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you for caring for your community, you know, and, and more than anything, you guys proved it with actions. So thank you.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you. So, you, you made a big difference, and you are making a big difference. Know that the census, we're going to probably have everything possibly by early January with a final number. Also know that we will be here, and we're not gonna be leaving you. And we will be here to support, as you write grants, we have data people that can help you. Not, they won't write the grant, but they'll tell you which table, if you come down and do presentations, and it is no cost to the county. So there's a lot of things out there. But I wanna take a few minutes to read the names of the people, because it is so important, and they will receive a certificate like this. And this certificate says, "The U.S. Census Bureau hereby recognizes," and the name is in there, "as an invaluable member of the twenty-twenty Census Community Partnership and Engagement Program. We appreciate the efforts you made in the partnership program of success in helping achieve a successful twenty-twenty census." And it is signed by Stephen D. Dillingham, the Director of the U.S. Census. So it is not myself or David, but it is the person who headed the Census Department. And let me read them for you. David DiLara, Sandra Urbano, Becky Venencia, Rosana Solis, Reina Guerra, Jenna Cercucho, Erby Villarreal, Joanna Trevino, Irene Lopez, Patricia Dames, Alma Garcia, Irene Solis, Maria Peña, Catherine Vera, Ludi Reyna, Olaria Mireles, Lionel Lopez. Starr County Compliance and Collection Office, Starr County Federal Programs Office Staff, Starr County Tax Assessor Collector Motor Vehicle Office, Starr County Precinct One Food Pantry Staff, Starr County Precinct Two Food Pantry Staff, Starr County Precinct Three Food Pantry Staff, Starr County Precinct Four Food Pantry Staff, Cynthia Garcia Fernandez, for all the great work she supported us, all the commissioners and judge, and all of your mayors as well. We thank you, we appreciate you, and know that there are not enough words for us to say, that history that you've made, and know that we're gonna be here. I can ask one little request. If you will take your certificates and just put them up so I can take a picture.
And I could show people.
If everybody can stand up, and that way, uh...
Thank you.
You would, and, uh, and David can also be in front, and I'll take the picture. Okay. Commission, just a little bit close, not too much.
Look, you will be very much with me.
Oh, man, you're doing well. I, oh, I love that smile.
Okay, now look this way. Again, thank you so much for... We have you and, uh, David in front, just like right here, and we'll take a picture. With all of the commissioners in the back, and you all...
You don't want to compromise it?
Or maybe right down the corners, like that.
Okay.
My other ticket?
No, that's okay, because I'm in my pocket. There you go. Again, thank you again for...
Thank you all so much for, for your help and guiding us. And, uh, you know, I concur, Cynthia, I think they did a wonderful job. Uh, you know, she was constantly out there, and, and, and you, our goal was to hit fifty percent, so I hope you do. Is there any, any knowledge, or do you have any ballpark figure of what the total is right now?
Not at this point. But as soon as we do, and I know Cynthia, I always alert her twenty-four hours ahead of time, as soon as I know anything, we will be the first to know. Now, one of the things that did come out last week was what we call the American Community Survey, the five-year. And that came out, and that's already available, so that kind of gives you a projection of what it could look like. So that is already out, and that's the latest information, and I'll send you that data, Cynthia. But Judge, know that as soon as David or I get any information, we will be the first, okay?
Yeah, and, and I do wanna publicly thank the commissioners, I think they did a tremendous job, you know, working. I, I know, anytime we would call them, that we wanted to be at their food pantry, we wanted to be at their library, wherever, uh, they always had staff there to help us, and, uh, you know, it, it couldn't have happened without their support. So, you know, I do thank all the commissioners.
Well, remember the following, you, I did your twenty chance, and that is something to be very proud of, because, like David said, we had a game plan of what we were gonna do, but all of a sudden, a new team player came in and dismantled the whole thing. And you helped do it, so again, thank you for your leadership, and I don't say goodbye, I simply say hasta luego, and I'll see you soon.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Liz. Okay. Going, going on to our... Agenda, item nine, is an action item, but this is just to extend a local disaster. Emergency order that we passed in three months. Item nine is to, uh, again, an action item to approve declaration of a local disaster, and this is the one we've been passing.
Motion to approve.
Aye, the motion.
Motion second to approve, discussion?
This is where the, that we're gonna to, uh...
Shut your gates?
No, this, this is just the emergency order, in order to qualify for whatever comes down on the line. Okay, uh, I do have a motion second, Alonfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The next item is a holiday calendar. Uh, I believe that's in your packet.
But then, that will...
My little, uh, see, there were, uh, let me just sign this. Yeah, and, and this one, the, but the only change that we had is that we don't have any election date, so we, and in Christmas, you know, we get the day before Christmas and the day after, well, Christmas falls on a, uh, on a Saturday. So now in Christmas, all we're gonna get is Monday.
Oh, you're not gonna have an offer? I don't know what's on, hang every day off.
Well, so in this, we're gonna be sending...
I, I got a resolution for that. I got a resolution for that. They might have a dozen years off. Well, we're not, they're...
Why is it money?
Will that be a gap?
This is, this is probably one of the calendars that has the least number of days that we've ever had, per, como digo, Christmas, instead of getting three days or getting one day. You know, with both elections también, so, you know, because we don't have...
Ah, but this is for next year.
Yeah, for, for twenty-one. Yeah, so, uh, all of the months are the same holidays that we've always had.
Well, I think it's, we are proving for, against... Totally agree with you. We're gonna have a bunch of years off.
We're not, we're not three days. And I have calls from requesting in Christmas, they give, uh, a day before, you know?
Well, if it's Friday, Saturday, and then it's Sunday, yeah? So I can get the day for the... Yeah, Monday.
Yeah, Monday, Saturday, Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, the Monday. No, they, don't, it's, it's, it's Saturday, and then Monday, it's obvious, yeah? It's gonna be, it's gonna be hard, you know?
I'll tell you nothing.
Yeah?
I'll tell you nothing.
You get Monday or you get Friday?
Uh, for Christmas?
Friday.
We get Friday.
I do hear it's a big Friday.
También. Yeah.
Usually, if it's Saturday, you get Friday, if it's Sunday, you get Monday.
Yeah, but on Christmas, we follow the state calendar, and the state calendar says the day before Christmas and the day after. So, I mean, when it falls on a Wednesday, totally, we get three days.
You learn how to, the, 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 to get them, man.
So if it falls during the weekend, I'll get one day.
I move the way through, you know?
Move in second to approve, discussion? Alonfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the fireworks, and this is the same order that we passed for quarter one month. It allows for fireworks, but it, it disallows the aerial. Very hard to enforce, but, you know, at least...
I move the way through, you know?
Yeah.
Move in second to approve, discussion?
Something happens, they, they can't say, we try.
Exactly. Alonfer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Item twelve, uh, is... The action item is to extend the contract with Hollis, Redditch, and Associates for a period from January twenty-eighth of twenty-twenty-one to January twenty-seventh of twenty-twenty-two. And the reason we, we didn't ask for proposals or anything like that is that in, in the contract, it just calls that we can extend it for one year without having to do anything, so...
You know, uh, on that respect, uh, where are we at? Like, I asked you yesterday, you know, I mean, how long, how long have you been on board? Two years already?
One, um, two years, yeah. Uh, the, they're moving along, in fact, we, we talk to, um, Capo and Dean, and Frank, and Hollis, at least once every couple of months. The, the leg right now, you know, unfortunately, has been, uh, one is, is the virus, COVID-nineteen. Austin and everyone else, they're on skeleton crews, you can't get anyone to answer. But they're still plugging away. Uh, on the drainage, or, on the drainage, uh, we had a change of direction, I guess, because we were going through USDA, which we were hoping to get a fifty percent grant. However, the CAG and Larelo gave, now they have this other program where I think we can get a one-hundred percent funded grant, one-hundred percent grant. So we changed directions to that now. Uh, the, in the courthouse rehab, uh, the money that Congressman Cuellar was able to, to acquire for us as a grant, USDA put it in a different bucket of money. Uh, and we can still apply, but it becomes much more difficult for us to get. And he had, that's an eleven-million-dollar project, he was able to get about six million, uh, in grant, which is unheard of. But because of that, uh, it was discussed, and with Hollis and, and the Congressman personnel, and it was decided that maybe we should wait another two months. Because once after January, the earmarks might come back for one. And secondly, Henry says, I can go ahead and get that money back where it should be, so I asked him, okay, instead of six, can I get up eight million? Uh, that way, we would only finance maybe three or four million. And, and he said he could do that. So that, that's where we're at, at the courthouse. The other one was what we have requested for parks. That one's still a go, hopefully through, uh, Parks and Wildlife, we can get a fifty percent grant. And, and you asked about additional funds for something else, if you need it, uh, we, we can ask for that too. That's, that'd be part of, there, there's no grant to that, but it's a loan, and, and that's something we can, especially with all the grants that we're getting, we can service that. I think if, if we borrowed fourteen million, our penance here had said that we would, it would incur about a penny and a half to service it. Orita, it's less than a penny, but we... So I, I think it's very feasible, and I think all the projects are...
How much do we have for that? We're already allocating a percentage for, for that?
For rent, no.
No?
No, porque, uh, see, the thing is, let, let's assume that, that we get approved this year. The chances of us getting the money this year are very slim. It's gonna take a while to, to the plants, and to the closing, and everything else. So for this year, we really didn't have the budget for it, okay? We will not be making payments on, uh, until the following budget year. So that's where we will have to come on now. Como digo, it would take, I wanna say about point six of a penny to service, look at, in the pipeline. Uh, that would go to INS, you know, because that would be to service the loan. So that means, because somewhere, somehow, we need to find a way to cut from general fund, uh, that point six of a penny, so that we can offset that and do INS. Uh, can it be done yet? It can be done. So, hopefully, that, that's where we're at, but I can ask him, can I, is that on the report?
I can.
Yeah, that one helps, uh...
Y hablar con ellos para...
Sí, lo digo porque conmigo ha venido una de esos, pero muy... muy desganado, yo como, yo como.
They've been working porque mira, ahorita con lo que le pagamos, they don't pay their overhead. I mean, they put more hours than they...
Yo entiendo, yo no creo que nos pases, recuerda por aquí, acá vino, que era la que, la que se creía que tenía todo exotico, pero nos dechó, cuánto nos dechó, treinta mil dólares y no la hubo a la vez.
No, this one, they are moving, unfortunately, como, porque ahorita, Doctor Jane, due to COVID, everything is, I mean, we're taking it ahead in todo, pero it doesn't mean that it has to stop, if it continues. If the earmarks come in, I mean, that'd be great, and it seems like it's gonna happen. But we'll see.
Ahorita no pagaron, you bring money, you get something, that's the manner of money.
Yeah, that's kinda how it is, obviously, yeah. You know, everyone, that went out the window years ago, and pocketing for expenses and supposedly they don't have the operation.
Yeah, usually.
So anyhow, that's where we're at, pero, you know, I would like to extend that contract, hopefully you'll get done this coming year, you know, so we'll have some...
I will, we will...
Second, your honor. Move and second to approve. Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirteen is an action item, also in New Orleans, you're... We need to name the Starr County Historical Committee members. The state of Texas requires us to submit this to them, and the names are on there, all of these people are people that are very much into the history of Starr County, which is what we need.
No, please, please, please.
I have a motion to approve.
Second, hold, your honor.
Second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.
I agree.
Item fourteen is an action item, and this approved contract between Jessi's Assistant Air Force and Starr County National...
Yes, yes, your honor, this, well, we submitted this in order for, for the uniforms, because we no longer have CINTAs, I think it was CINTAs. So now we're gonna go into a contract with Jessi. Motion to approve, your honor.
Thank you.
Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item fifteen is an action item, and this is the creation of a count for Justice Assistance Grant Program.
Yes, Judge Commissioners, for the last three weeks, almost a month, I've been working with the, totally with the auditor's office on the budgets that we've been discussing and that we have further down to. This is upon the recommendation of the auditor's office to keep track of the grants, creating accounts for them separately, individually. And so this is upon their recommendation to do this for one of the Justice Assistance Grant Program, which is an investigator in my office.
Motion to approve, your honor. Move and second to approve, discussion.
Just a clarification, it's a bank account that we're talking about.
Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item sixteen is an action item, and this to approve budget for discretionary account in the Justice Assistance Program.
Yes, Commissioners, Judge, I have not submitted one, Judge. We are gonna be submitting, basically what we submit is to the state, what was given to us from the state, we'll be submitting that to the auditor's office. I'd ask that the court approve pending the approval of the auditor's office. It's basically gonna be a copy, transposing, no counting monies, it's gonna be straight from the governor's grant office.
Basically, the grant will dictate what the budget is. Because they'll let us, they'll tell us what, what kind...
What you're right on.
Second, hold, your honor.
And move and second to approve. Under discussion, you know, I just wanna make something clear. Any expenses, whether they're, the fringe benefits or anything like that, have to come from the grant. I had that discussion with the incoming district attorney. Everything has to come from the grant. And we need to know what personnel is getting paid from that grant. Because the day we lose that grant, those people are out of a job.
And this, Judge, this is exactly the reason why they recommend creating separate accounts, so that that can be traced, yes.
Okay, you have motion second, honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. The next one is to create an account for the Juvenile Justice Assistance Prevention Program.
This, Judge and Commissioners, this is a grant also, which was awarded for a resource officer, a school resource officer, within my office, and that's the same thing, Judge. It will be, it is upon the recommendation of the auditor's office, so that we can track exactly all the monies and who will be being paid out of them exactly, as the judge mentioned it.
Motion to approve, your honor.
Thank you.
Move and second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item eighteen is an action item, and this is to approve budget for discretionary account for Juvenile, this is the...
The same one, Judge. It's the same one, not the judge, where it will be the budget that was submitted by the state, which includes, and I would like to just note, especially on this one, Judge, every single penny includes the fringes, it includes the FICA, it includes the insurance, includes everything.
Move and...
Second. Move and second for approval, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Let me, all of these motions are made pending approval by the auditor's office, is that correct?
Yes, that's what I was suggesting, of course, Judge.
Good. Yeah, also, you know, I'm gonna add that I need to see those budgets. I'm the budget officer.
Right.
So I need to see them.
Yeah, okay.
You know, before you open approval.
Yeah.
Because if you bring them out here, if I haven't seen them, I'm gonna vote against it.
Right.
Item nineteen is also an action item.
Your Honor, if I may, on nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, I would ask this, the court to table those, Judge. I've been working with the auditor's office, they, actually, these last two weeks, they've been swamped with, I believe, COVID issues regarding financing for the county and stuff. And so they weren't able to finalize the budgets. And so they, they were not able to review them finally, and so I asked the court to table them until then.
That's nineteen through twenty-three?
Yes.
Motion to table, your honor, nineteen to twenty-three.
Thank you.
Move and second to table, discussion.
Judge, we're a day or two away from finishing that, by the next meeting, we should have everything. And that'll give you time to review them.
No, no, say, make sure you get them to...
Yeah, we've been, since the very last judicial court, Judge, I've met with Javi and with Sam on multiple occasions and things, working it.
Yeah, basically, we need to just pinpoint the salaries and the fringes and that kind of stuff to get the dollar amounts correct.
Did I talk to the board?
No.
Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-four is a...
Four, Sean.
You left our Jim Paul, who I...
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
Morning.
Item twenty-four is to discover an update on the transition in twenty-nine, Judicial District Attorney, Eleg, Mr. Ramirez.
Good morning. Mr. Ramirez is in Dubal County, they, we had a, the Commissioners Court said at the exact same time over there, so I'm not looking Starr County for him. Obviously, y'all know me, my name is Eleg, we have the Alibi, the incoming force assistant, starting January. Just a few updates, I know, we've been here in the past, I've mentioned that certain agencies, for example, HIDA, we're gonna be coming back, I'm sure y'all have heard, but as of this past week, HIDA has been reinstated by the South Texas HIDA Executive Board. We've been working with the Sheriff's Department, we've been working with Real PD and some of the local PDs here, and then all major federal agencies, and we're working on bringing a team that is gonna help Starr County. I know that CBP, National Guard, Border Patrol, DEA, Homeland Security are gonna be assigning full-time members to the task force. FBI, DEA will also be participating in it, and we're gonna be working joint operations with them, and we already have some stuff like that that we're gonna be working on. As far as staffing, we've been working with Human Resources in order to get this done, and I'm sure some of the, some of the stuff that's gonna be presented today is some of the work we've done with them. As far as budgets, I did talk to the county auditor this morning. The items regarding the, the budgets, we are gonna be asking for it to be tabled to the meeting later on this month, because there was some stuff that came up that we wanted to make sure we fixed before it passed, in order to prevent us from coming back here again. But other than that, we haven't found any cooperation from the outgoing district attorney, but we've talked to the county judge, we've talked to some of the commissioners, we've gotten help from the auditor's office, from, from the personnel, the, we've met with the district judges, we've met with pretty much as many people as we could, whoever wanted to meet with us, we've been, we've been able to meet with them, so we were trying to make ourselves available as well as preparing as we can, because we only have limited resources as to what's actually at the DEA office right now. Obviously, once January, the first comes, we'll be in there and we'll be taking inventory of everything. But as far as the update on the transition, that's pretty much it, I don't know if there's any questions.
Item twenty-five is also here. And this is, well, to approve the budget, is this the one that... Well, to approve an amended budget.
Correct, because this is, this is one of the items we're asking to, to table for the following meeting later on this month. And as well as the, as the next item, however, what I noticed is, one of the corrections on item twenty-six is that we requested also a correction, and here the lone worded it as an amendment, and I know we spoke to the auditor's office, so more than likely, number twenty-six, we'd probably ask for it to be passed in order for it to be, us to be able to correct the wording on there, but item number twenty-five, where I see for it to be tabled.
Okay, so you wanna table twenty-five and twenty-six and correct it for the next meeting?
Correct.
Twenty-six?
Yes, sir.
To show that it's a correction.
A correction.
No time to really correct in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Correct.
I have a motion as to that, and the second, discussion.
Tableting item twenty-five, Judge?
No, no, it's passing twenty-five and twenty-six. Well, I'm sorry, we're tabling twenty-five and twenty-six, but I think the motion says that they re-post, that it posts as a budget correction on twenty-six.
Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, sir.
Correct.
Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-five, approved contract with Jose Ángel Álvarez?
Twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, twenty-seven. I think it'd be pretty moot.
Yeah, this, this item is to hire a, pretty much an outreach specialist. He's gonna be taking care of anything that, that does with the public. We're planning on educating not only the public as to things that can he can do, and also the importance of, for example, in schools, recording, you know, child abuse, stuff of that nature, but essentially, it's dealing with crime prevention. We're also gonna be using him to create media when we do officer training. That's something that we've talked to the local PDs about, with the sheriff about, and even some federal agencies, we're gonna be increasing, heavily increasing the amount of law enforcement training, so we need somebody to be able to work all this, all this, I guess, graphics and videos and all that.
Only question that I have, Mr. Ramirez, on that, will he be a county employee or will he be under contract?
Under contract, Judge, I did provide a proposed contract, I don't know, I, I don't know if they handed it to you, no, I do have an extra copy. But he would be under contract, and he would be paid under the forfeiture fund. And in fact, that would be the only person, a contract employee that would be paid under the forfeiture fund and bar county employees or anything like that, and we zeroed that, those items out because the forfeiture fund has been, has been pretty much concluded, to the point we can't spend much of it.
Is there a motion to...
Motion to approve, your honor.
Second.
Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item twenty-eight and twenty-nine are MOUs between the district attorney, Eleg's office, and US Customs and Border Protection, and also with the city of New Orleans.
Yes, item number thirty is also an MOU between the DEA office and Starr County Sheriff's Office.
Will we take those three at the same time?
Yes, sir. These are dealing with the HIDA task force, because of the executive board restocking the HIDA task force, we need new MOUs in place. We've talked to the sheriff's department, he's very happy and excited to take part and assign somebody, which we already have the individual who he's gonna assign. Real Grande PD as well. We're gonna be working with the director of HIDA to see if we can get some additional funding, so we can include Roman PD. Roman PD is very willing and happy to, to take part, based on some of the information we're getting, it's gonna be necessary to have a pretty good representative of county as a whole, because we have some pretty serious drug problems that are going on here that I think we're not seeing the full effects because of the pandemic, but they're there. Some of the cells of these narcotics are affecting the community, and we're gonna be taking that head on. So with that, CBP is requiring a MOU, which I've got with their attorneys, and we were able to draft an MOU, which we did provide, and the other federal agencies don't require any CBP.
The only thing that I really look at, I don't know how this MOUs, I haven't read them, but is that whoever they appoint, are we gonna be liable to the county for them? Or would the different entities be, you know, when, when they're not working on HIDA?
Oh, so when you say liable, do you mean when they do something wrong?
Yeah.
Okay, so obviously, when, when, when they're doing something wrong, HIDA is a task force. So while they're there, they're under the direction control of the DEA's office, but they're still representatives of their own agency, respective agency, so they're working under the color of office of their respective agency, so if they do something wrong, their original agency is, is responsible.
And then the other thing is money.
Correct.
There's always about money.
And as far as CBP, CB, well, actually, as far, as far as every federal agency taking part of the, of the HIDA task force, each respective agency will be paying their own investigator that is assigned, so in other words, we're receiving these additional investigators with all their resources at no cost to the, to the, to the county. The two investigators, the one from sheriff's department, the one from, from Real PD, it's gonna be reimbursed, so all the costs are gonna be reimbursed, so essentially, but the beauty with the Real PD is that they're gonna be able to follow reimbursement directly with the HIDA task force, and then as far as the sheriff's department, the DEA office will reimburse through the, through the grant fund, the sheriff's department, then HIDA will reimburse us.
So the county will not be out any money?
No, 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 this is, this is all, this is all to benefit the county at no cost.
Motion to approve, your honor, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, MOU between, with the CBP, Real Grande City PD, and Starr County Sheriff's Office.
Let me ask you one question, just a second. Why was the, the, HIDA just were dismantled while back ago, and now they're, they're deciding to come back again?
So...
I can answer.
I, I can answer, I can answer in some, in some ways, there are some, there are some things I cannot disclose, because it's being handled by other people. But essentially, based on our conversations with the executive board, what it came down to was improper supervision, a lot of it. The district attorney's office essentially did not supervise the, the HIDA task force. There was a lot of things that were happening wrong, in fact, I'm happy you reminded me, because, so essentially, we, we got a laundry list from HIDA of all the things that were wrong. And based on our conversation with many of you and, and the committee, especially during the campaign time of Mr. Ramirez, we heard the same complaints from the community. The HIDA board had been paying attention to the same things that not only you all were complaining about, but so was the community. As part of our, of our, I guess, plan, because we had to create a strategic plan, in order for these things not to happen again, we, we created what is called a policy manual. So this is our policy manual here. This, this is gonna dictate how not only our employees of the DEA office are supposed to act and, and, and what they're supposed to do in certain situations, but especially law enforcement officers. This is everything from how they're supposed to act in public, to how they're supposed to take an interview, to how, what steps need to take if they get in an accident, so pretty much everything is gonna be in our policy manual, which has never been done in the history of the DEA office. They've had a policy scattered around and pretty much shoved in a, in a desk, but nobody has really paid attention to that. So that's what part of the training is gonna happen, but to go back to your question, is there's a lot of reasons why HIDA got suspended. Mismanagement and, and lack of supervision was a massive one. This is not something that just happened out of the blue. This is something that has been brought up to the district attorney's attention over and over again, and has been ignored. Like I mentioned, there's other reasons, there's other reasons that I cannot get into, but essentially, the, the executive board wanted to see that Starr County could be trusted. Because they, basically, under the last administration, they had a very bad impression of Starr County as a whole, not just Starr County as far as the county itself, I'm talking about Starr County and its agencies. They had a very bad impression of it, so our job, starting April, well, actually, it started in May, but in April, we started meeting with the, with the HIDA director, we started meeting with executive board members, which is the district attorney's office from Cameron County, Elago County, the, there's members in Laredo as well, and other parts of, Assistant U.S. Attorney out of Laredo as well. There, there's, there's members all over the, the South Texas, but we started meeting with them to be able to get what the issues were. We put that together with what we have been hearing were issues locally that, that people had with HIDA, and we tried to figure out what was the proper balance. As far as trust, trust is gonna be a big issue, because HIDA, HIDA had an opportunity, and obviously, they, they lost the, the public's trust, they lost a lot of the federal partnerships trust. So one of the things we're doing to regain the trust is every HIDA agent, whether it's hired through the DEA's office or assigned through another agency, is gonna be required to take a secret clearance background through Homeland Security of our commander that's gonna be coming in on January the first, has already passed the secret clearance. And then, once we start the program, everybody knows from our city commander down, we'll be completing their secret clearance program. If they don't pass the secret clearance, it's terminated. So we're, we're pretty much doing everything we can to make sure that it doesn't happen. If, if, if people have complaints, we're gonna take those very seriously. If people have, obviously, you know, nobody's gonna be happy that, that HIDA's kicking on their door, they're selling narcotics or, or lottery money, but if there's something that they're doing wrong that they're not supposed to be doing, we're gonna take that very seriously and make sure that the proper actions are taken to stop it. And that's the same for all the other agencies, or prosecution unit, or any of our employees at the DEA offices, we'll make sure that it's written right. I don't know if anybody else...
Any other question? And now I do have a motion, the second, honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Thinking about the... Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. Item thirty-two?
Thirty-one, thirty-one.
Thirty-one. Thirty-one, it's an action item, and this to approve the implementation of the electronic signatures for accounting software, by Honitor and President. Mr. Ramirez?
Basically, this is a step towards what we're trying to get at. In the end, we'd like to have electronic signatures for all our checks. In fact, we'd like to get our checks run through a sealer to where checks are folded and sealed already with a signature and mailing address and everything, kind of like, I don't know if y'all have seen a check from the school, from Regandy, and that comes in, you tear off the ends, and you open it up, and the check is in there. That's the end that we'd like to get to, this is just one step in that direction, and that is to get the electronic signatures on the payroll, every payroll we have, which is every two weeks, we have about eighty employees that are still getting checks rather than direct deposit, and so the treasurer and myself are having to sign eighty checks every two weeks for payroll, and this would just simplify that. So it's just a step in that direction.
Motion to approve, your honor.
Second.
Move and second, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-two is an action item, and this to request for a contract extension on grant number seven-two-one-nine-one-five-three, emergency services.
Your Honor, this is a, you'll find that we're screwing up the public, but it's very slow due to the fact that we have to come in, to get the O, get them passed, and then I took the red case, they are marching, very slow.
That's been the case in Pecito.
So, your Honor...
Is there a motion to approve that?
I just want to...
Second. Move and second, discussion.
So these are the utilities...
Fun from the self assistance. Yeah, but you know, they have to come in, through your PO, then from the PO, you gotta get, send it, get it paid, and then, I mean, it's a very slow process.
Yeah.
And that's the reason we have a special meeting, because that's simple.
Unfortunately, we don't have a different, I'm sorry? Yeah, unfortunately, we don't have a different method, it's gotta go through those protocols, and it's the same for us, it's taking up a lot of time. It's gotta get done.
Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item thirty-three and thirty-four are donations.
No different donation.
Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. And then items thirty-five through...
Forty-five?
Forty-four, no, no, forty-five. Are budget amendments or any...
I guess these are all within their departments, we reviewed them, and we recommend they get them.
Motion to approve, your honor.
Second, hold, your honor.
Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item forty-six is a budget correction. Mr. Ramirez?
Yes, step one, two, we've just been reviewing, we recommend they get them.
Hold, hold.
Second, aye.
Move and second to approve, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Item... Oh, okay. It's eleven o'clock, and we're showing deception five-five-one-one-zero-seven-four, and five-five-one-one-zero-seven-one. We will now go into a second session to discuss order of salaries. Today is so. Blue Cross, COVID nineteen-bang. The higher legal counsel for DC nineteen-three-eighty-two. And the legal advice on the Garcia document. So... Under order of salaries, is there a motion on that?
Motion to approve, order of salaries.
Second, hold, your honor.
Move and second to approve as presented, discussion. Honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Honitor, please, aye. Oppose. Motion carries. The next thing we discussed with the ASO, that was just information, also not actually media on that. Then we covered the Blue Cross COVID mandate and member costs. The rest we're going to explore, you know, what, what we could do and what we couldn't, before we take action on that.
They're talking about...
So, then, the other thing we discussed was the higher legal counsel for cost DC nineteen-three-eighty-two, and I guess what was discussed was that Mr. Gonzalez would want the cop to block or neighboring county first, and decide what steps we, we need to follow, so there's no action on that. And then the last thing we discussed was to get legal advice on Ms. Garcia's documents, and Mr. Canales and Mr. Gonzalez will be looking at that. Do we need to authorize you to...
No.
Okay, so again, no action needed on that, news information. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. One, 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 two, two, two. Committee, Judge?
Yeah. Move and second, honitor, please, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries.